The West Orange Board of Education meeting for March the 12th, 2018. Here at West Orange High School, Mr. Calavano, please.
Mr. Alper?
Here.
Mr. Charles?
Here.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Here.
Mr. Robertson?
Here.
And Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, if we can remain standing after the Pledge of Allegiance for a moment of silence in honor of Ms. Villa Rosa, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Calavano, please.
Notice of meeting, please take notice that adequate notices of meeting has been provided for in the following manner: That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 9, 2018. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star-Lager. That said notice was posted in the lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Calavano. Need a motion for consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of February 20th, 26th, 27th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Do I have a second? Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes, for February 26th, but not for February 20th or 27th, as I was not present for the residency hearings.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes. I wasn't present, I was not present on February 20th.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes, except for February 27th.
And that's your abstaining, right? You're not saying no?
Correct.
Okay. And President Charles?
Yes, all three.
Thank you, Mr. Calavano. Mr. Drudzky, superintendent report, please.
Thank you. I just want to read something, just take two minutes to do it before I get into the superintendent's report. I wanted to share with teachers, parents, and our community that I am humbled and grateful to have the opportunity to work with you and serve the West Orange Public Schools for three more years. Along my journey, I have learned by listening to your feedback and recommendations, and while I am proud of our team efforts in advancing student achievement, and I am aware of areas where I can improve to help us continue in partnership to enrich the lives of our students and the district. Additionally, you've heard me say that one of the most important acts that we do as a district is to hire great people. We have a very talented faculty and staff, and I am truly grateful to work with them. Often you've heard me speak of the goal to challenge children at the highest level without frustrating them and to support our students in their growth and development. Let's strengthen our commitment and accomplishment in this together. We can work together for the betterment of our students, community, and all of us. Thank you to all of you, and a very special thank you to the Board of Education for the reappointment. Okay. I would like to just talk about a couple of things. A couple of them are just updates. Our safety and security forum. I want to let everybody know who was not able to come to the high school to the Safety and Security Forum in person that there is something on the website that they can go and fill out. There is a forum that they can provide their suggestions or ideas. Please take advantage of that. Our goal is to collect all of that information, put it together in a usable format, and then share that information so we can have a direction about ideas moving forward with our safety and security. Second, we know two days from now there is a national walkout. We have planned extensively with the Police Department. The administrators have met with the students specifically at the high school to really talk about what their goal is and what are they trying to accomplish. We want to help them accomplish that goal, but our number-one priority is the safety of all those students and all the staff that are going to be participating on March 14th. So we want to make sure everybody knows that the letters went home, it's on the website, and it is available for everybody to understand what we're doing, but please realize that the police are very clear and that specific details are not being shared of access points and things that they will be doing to make sure prior to the event and after the event that we make it as safe as we can. I am concerned on a couple of levels, and I'll share this with the Board. Number one, the snowfall has clearly made us change what we were planning to do. Tomorrow, after the next snowstorm, we have a company coming in to properly clean off the snow on Soriano Stadium. We do not want to use the soccer field because, as you know, it was redone this year and is brand-new, and they are concerned about putting the brush on the field, the soccer field, but the football field, they're comfortable doing that, and we will clear the snow from the field once it's all done tomorrow. I'm not going to go into too much more detail of how we're getting there and what we're doing as far as making sure kids are safe to get there, but I want you to realize that things like snowball fights had to come into consideration. And I know that sounds crazy, but it's not, unfortunately, trying to make sure that we're all doing the right thing. Mounds of snow and the safety of if we have it here, do we have to move all that snow, etc. So there's a lot of things that went into it. Us being off on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday hurt the opportunity. We had meetings scheduled with the police and the administrators, and obviously that had to be canceled three times. We were able to meet today, finalize everything, and I want to thank John Morella and Ed Diaz for helping us, and obviously Chief Abbott for providing the resources that we feel very comfortable that the middle-school students and the high-school students are going to be able to have their expression while also us being comfortable with them being safe. So we're in good shape, and hopefully it goes off well, and then we will report back and let you know how that goes. Now, the one thing that we were able to tie in is the social studies component of the walkout, and there's going to be, all the social studies teachers are going to be talking with the students on particular things that relate to that kind of event and how it ties back to the classroom. So I want to thank those individuals that really did a nice job, and all those teachers who are going to have great discussions on Wednesday and Thursday with the students in the social studies classes. All right, next, and again, this is very brief, New Jersey CUSAC, we've been talking all year that this is West Orange's year. They're coming April 11th. We're well-prepared and ready for them to come in. It's just a matter of, there's a couple of days that are really crazy, and they do site visits as well, different schools. They just say, "Take us to a classroom, the high school, middle school, elementary," etc. So that's all part of the two-day evaluation, but it's set for April 11th, and we're confident that it's going to be a very successful outcome. All right, and lastly, I want to just share with you a calendar, next year's calendar. We discussed for quite a while about Election Day being closed, and we had a teacher come up, Ms. Torito came up and said that, as she, I agreed with, trying to close on that day along with many other people, who, many other parents, staff members, that felt that they should be closed. So what I'm going to propose, we had two options, and I'm going to give you my first one, which I believe we should go with, I'm going to recommend, but I'll tell you the second one and explain why I do not believe we should go with the second option. So if you look at the top page, that's the 18-19 year, and what I've provided to you is every year for the last six years. And the reason I did that is, prior to the last two years, we have not been closed on Columbus Day. And the reason that we utilize Columbus Day is when we changed from having the two professional development days for the staff back-to-back before students came. We changed that because we didn't feel that it was as effective as it could be, that we felt going a month or two into the school year, everybody being back into the swing of education and then having that day was much more productive. And I believe, if the calendar allows us to do this moving forward, we should continue to do that. However, for this year, what I'm going to recommend is that we go back to the back-to-back days before students come in and start the first day. So if you're looking at September, you'll notice that Monday, the 3rd, is Labor Day. We already have Tuesday, the 4th, as our first staff day, and I'm recommending we take the day and do Wednesday, the 5th, and move the first student day to the 6th. Now, the reason that we would do that, right now we have October 8th as our second PD day for the staff. And we're now going, what I'm recommending is we do not have that day off at all, that we would come to school, full-day school, on the 8th. But we then could use the additional day that we have, that we need to take off, on November 6th, Election Day. So technically, our second PD day, if you look at October 8th, there's the circle and the triangle. That means we're closed, and that means it's a full-day staff PD day. We would take the staff PD day and move it to September 5th and have back-to-back PD days. And we would then take the closed day and move that down to November 6th, which is Election Day. So Columbus Day, October 8th, would have nothing around that, no circle or no triangle. Now, the reason that we're looking at doing it on the 5th is because of the movement that we're going to be working with the staff on, two days from now, on Wednesday, with the new evaluation model. And if you, as a board, at the next meeting, when you see the presentation and agree that that is the way to move the district with the evaluation model, we need to have the training for the staff earlier than later. And we feel very strongly that waiting until November 6th to have that training is way too far into the school year, because we do not want to roll something out without really having time to provide quality training on the new model. So if we had to wait until the November 6th Election Day, we couldn't start evaluations until after that. So that's one of the major reasons. Plus, it gives us back-to-back days. It allows us still to have the principal meeting on that first day and some classroom time for the staff, and then we would have the next day, we would have half of the day to do some of the work we need on the 4th, and then the whole day on the 5th to kind of do follow-up on the model. Now, I know that coming off the beach and from vacation and things, right after Labor Day, is hard to get, to change your brain over. I get it. But because of the importance of proper training for the new model, we feel very strongly that doing it back-to-back in September is the right way to go for this year. Moving forward, I would not recommend we have back-to-back, because I think the second day of PD is much more beneficial in either October or November. And in this case, I would try to move it back to October and do what we need to do there as far as October. Nothing else would change on the calendar. The graduation date would still be June 20th, and just so everybody's aware, that is a major player in this, because we cannot graduate on Friday. So if we added another day, we'd move that, meaning we would not be able to graduate until the Monday, which kids are done on Thursday, and then you have Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then come back for graduation, which, again, I think you lose some of the importance of the commencement exercises there. So that's what I'm recommending. Now, the second is simply what we were talking about last time, last meeting, is taking that day from Columbus Day and moving everything down to November 6th on Election Day. But based on why I've described to you about the importance of the training for the new model, it's, that's why I'm recommending that we go ahead and have PD on the 4th and the 5th. Columbus Day would be a full day of school. Everybody would be closed, the schools would be closed on Election Day, there'd be no PD. So let me stop there and just ask for any questions.
Comments from the Board?
I just have one thing. Looking at the calendar on top, and just the one directly below it, I don't see the three days for Edison parent conferences.
Yes, they are, if you notice, if you look at the key of symbols, Edison parent conferences...
It's a square with a dot in the corner?
They are set up for, I'm sorry, Mr. Fitzgerald asked for them to go back to an earlier date this year.
Okay. January?
No, no. He wanted it back earlier in November. So we'll make sure those get included.
Okay.
His staff felt that it was better earlier...
That worries too late, yeah.
So we were going to reflect what his staff was talking to him about.
Okay. Yeah, I like being closed on Election Day. It's much safer for the kids. Yeah. Where are we on getting election out of all the schools altogether?
We're working on it, and as everybody knows, you know, the county clerk, Linda Van Nessie, she's outstanding, and she's trying to help us, and she's been working with the township, working with me, etc. The issue is the location and the meeting, all those parameters you have to have, all those criteria you have to have.
Yeah, because we have primary day in June this year.
Yes.
Mr. Drudzky, if we look at September 2018, so the kids' first day at school will be the 6th. They'll come to school on the 6th and the 7th, then be off on the 10th and 11th, right?
September's a very bad month this year as far as continuity, but again, it is what it is on those days.
Okay.
All right.
Any...
So it's on the calendar, or excuse me, it's on the agenda to vote for those changes that I recommended.
Okay.
I think the changes you recommend that are very well thought out and prove safety and security, it supports professional development, they're very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Drudzky, one follow-up on the walkout on March 14th. Just want to confirm, because a few parents have been asking, the students will not lose credit, right?
No credit, no consequences whatsoever, as long as they walk out when they're supposed to and return when they're supposed to. Now, again, we're doing some things to track to make sure students are doing the right thing here, and we're hoping that everybody understands that the reason we're doing this is the message and the movement and the idea about gun violence and so on. So we're hoping that everybody does the right thing.
Thank you.
The graduation, the actual graduations ceremony and commencement exercises, doing it on a Monday versus... I concur, the first thing, I concur, we should be closed for Election Day. I think that's important. It's not worth, it's, there's too much security issues. But the question at the end of the year, if we move graduation to a Monday, to that Monday night, so we could have, school could technically be over on that Friday, the 21st?
Actually, if we moved it that way, the last day of school would be the 20th, which is Thursday.
Okay.
Right, because everybody is done on the 19th, which is Wednesday, that's a half-day. So if we moved it a day, but I just do not believe in waiting, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then doing it on Monday. There's just something special about the years come to an end, and then when you put that immediate gap in there, it kind of changes things. Plus, there's a lot of families, kids that leave and go do things, and it doesn't really affect our older kids, our seniors, that much. Some do, they go away to camps, they are camp counselors, there's a lot of, camps are all started that next week. In fact, they're actually started that weekend that we're discussing about graduation. So there's a lot of other variables that come into play when you're looking at that very last week of June and all the other requirements that kids could be part of.
Anybody have any questions on the HIV report? No comments?
No.
No questions?
Nope. Okay, just a couple of things. Just a reminder, on Wednesday, two days from now, it is a scheduled 90-minute delayed opening for professional development for the staff. It just happened, we've had this, obviously, for a long time on the calendar, and then the March 14th walkout came. So the high school reports at 9 o'clock, the middle school reports at 9:40, and elementary reports at 10:15. That's when school begins. I know the doors open up earlier, that's when school actually begins for the 90-minute delay on Wednesday. Another thing that got canceled last week was the honors presentation for the Roosevelt Group. And again, the material is exactly the same from the Liberty and Roosevelt, but it is scheduled for tomorrow night at 7 o'clock. I have another commitment, but Mr. Hush said he would be glad to do the presentation and take care of everything. We had the principals at the last one over at Liberty, and it's really more of explaining the changes and answering any questions we can do. So anyone who would like to attend the middle-school honors, it's for grades 5, 6, current grades 5, 6, and 7. That's tomorrow night at Roosevelt, 7 o'clock, in their auditorium. The art show reception, which was scheduled for today, has been moved to next week, the 19th. That's 1 o'clock in the West Orange Public Library. And again, that was because of the snow, and we didn't have time to get things set up properly, so we moved it to next Monday. And then, I think everybody knows that the St. Patty's Day Parade was moved to next Sunday as well. I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, maybe, you know, somebody in the Board wants to talk about the girls' basketball team, so I won't go there, and Mr. Charles, I'm sure you want to talk about the wrestling, so I won't go there as well, but I'll leave that up. So that's all I have for right now.
Okay. I have a couple of things to follow up and then ask for some more comments. In regards to the safety and security forum, can you talk about a little bit about the report that was in the Pioneer about the poor air quality and what the administration and what the Buildings and Grounds Department has started to do to rectify the situation?
Sure. And it's unfortunate that I wasn't made aware of that earlier. I wish I was, and I spoke to Mr. Moore, and he said he was not as aware either. So since that has come out, we immediately reached out to Air Quality Control, where there's different companies that handle that, and they come in and do the testing within rooms. They take a building and they go to different rooms within the building, different levels in the room, and then there's a, excuse me, a process that they go through. Once that process is finished and we get the results, then that would be presented, and we would put a plan together. If there are issues within a room or rooms, we would obviously need to address that issue. I can tell you that there, some of the HVAC components in this building have been changed out based on the ESIP project, not only this building, I believe it was Liberty as well, Mr. Calavano?
I believe it's Roosevelt.
Roosevelt, okay. So to answer your question, when we were made aware of it, we obviously, our Buildings and Grounds Director, Bob Ziggy, immediately reached out, and we have that in place, that process. They will be testing, and when we get the results back, obviously, we'll review the results and take action immediately if there's something that needs to be fixed.
Any other comments or questions from the Board? Okay. Move on to the next item on the agenda. There's questions from the public on agenda items. They suggest comments or questions on agenda items, agenda items only. We do have one item that we're removing from the agenda, is on page 7, item number 6, the proposal for Partners in Engineering and Science Incorporated for Meaton Town. We are removing that from tonight's agenda. So we're open to public comment. Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Mr. Calavano will work the clock. Everyone will have three minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Jean Torito. I'm a teacher at Gregory School, and I just wanted to say, in the past, I've been critical publicly, and so I wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you for making the change to the calendar. I do appreciate it, and I know that a lot of teachers, especially at the elementary level, appreciate it as well. I do want to say, though, that the primary election is still a concern to me, that the schools will be open, and if there can't be another change made to the calendar, maybe you can rent a tent, or the county can rent a tent to put in the, on the fields, because they have weddings in tents, so you should be able to vote in a tent, right? So, thank you again.
Thank you. Next.
Jennifer Beazer, 82, Lawrence Avenue. I also wanted to say thank you. I think that's an important change, to close the schools on Election Day, and it is good not only for the schools but for the voters. What we had at Gregory in the trailers wasn't ideal. There were people who had a little trouble getting up there, and with bad weather, that could be a really bad problem. Just a clarification about the air quality issue. Maybe I missed this, but is there a testing being done in all the schools? And is there, what kind of regular testing goes on to catch something like this before it gets to this point? And I also would like to say, it speaks very well of what's happening at West Orange High School, the way these students researched this and pulled this all together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jeremiah Salinas, 7 Crystal Ave. I did have a question about what the stance the district was taking on National Walkout Day, but you answered that before. I just think that information should have come out a little bit sooner rather than tonight. But I do appreciate the fact that you're taking into consideration snowball fights and small little things like that, that sometimes mature kids get into. Another thing is about the safety meeting last week. You know, many parents and teachers voiced their concerns over safety in all the buildings, from classroom doors to outside building doors, metal detectors and security, more security, more police, and so much more to do to help, you know, that everybody stay safe. I think there was one question that was asked that was really, really good. How do we make it real? That's the question. How do you make it real? Is the district going to look for ways to partner with the local offices at the town, county, and state levels to come up with a creative financial plan to make all of these changes, or most of these changes, happen in a timely manner? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll close that portion of the agenda. Mr. Drudzky, if you can...
Sure. All right, so we have the calendar. Ms. Beazer, one of the things that Mr. Charles indicated is that it's something we want to put together and evaluate all the schools and look at all the schools, and it's important to do that, and especially when you have buildings that are as old as our buildings, that's something that we need to kind of make. We were ahead of it when we were talking about testing the water. It was something the Board felt very strongly that we should do this on a rotating basis throughout the year, and so this is something we're going to obviously have to do as well. Now, as far as, you know, what we're going to find, I don't know, you know, what we're going to find. It may, there may be an issue, there may not be, but at this point, we're going to wait till we get the results back. The, Mr. Salinas, again, the issue, is that we were planning on putting the letter out much sooner, but the most important part of the march was working with the police because we needed to make sure that this event is very safe. And being that we couldn't have all the stakeholders sitting at a table because we were closed Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and then unfortunately, two of the key people were not around over the weekend, we were able to finalize things this morning with the Police Department, and I felt very comfortable with the plan that's been put together. It was obviously shared with the Board, and so that's why it was delayed. If we didn't have those snow days, it clearly wouldn't have been delayed, but unfortunately, that's why we were. The safety and working with the police and making sure that we have their expertise input, it was really, really key on this one. As far as your question, how can we do this and make it real? That's why we want to still make sure we give the community the opportunity to provide their suggestions and ideas and then compile that, and then really look and... their suggestions and ideas and then compile that, and then really look and have another follow-up meeting around some of those things. And in looking at it, it's really what can be done immediately, what can be done on a short-term basis, and what is a long-term basis? And, you know, really talking to the board about, okay, if we're looking at replacing, I'll give you an example, every single door in the district has been evaluated, and so now we have that compiled that we can say that the following doors in this building, and the following doors in this building, following doors, interior and exterior. So, that takes a little bit of time to pull that information together, but now it's not a guessing game that, okay, we need to do 40. We have the exact number of doors that we feel need to be changed for a multitude of reasons that meet the criteria that's set out by either Homeland Security or the Department of Ed working hand-in-hand, and they are clear on things that make the doors safe and things that make doors unsafe. So, when we look at that criteria and we evaluate the doors around that criteria, that allows us to be clear on what doors have to be changed out. So, it takes just a little bit of time to really look at those important factors, and again, I mentioned this at the safety meeting, doors are one of the most important, because when you can secure the perimeter and you can make sure that people aren't getting in around that, that helps. It doesn't mean it's going to solve the problem. It just means that that helps keep the bad people out, and then we just have to make sure our practices are that we don't leave doors open and so on and so forth. But with that, trying to make it real is collecting that data, having another meeting, and then really talking about the short-term, the immediate goals that can be done, the short-term goals that can be done, and then the long-term goals.
Mr. Rutske, I'd just like to jump in on that point as well. We have all these good ideas from that night, and certainly, we're going to be getting some more, you know, or soliciting some more from the public, but there are things that we can do now, and there are things that we're going to have to budget for, you know, long-range. And to help facilitate that or coordinate that, one of the things that I want to do on the board level is to establish a safety and security committee. Where, I want to do it tonight, but there's some things we have to finalize with the attorney on that, and some of the guidelines on that, so I'm going to hold off till next meeting on that. But I want the public to know that myself and all of the board members believe that's a top priority, both safety and security of this, and we're going to set up a committee that's going to be charged with keeping that responsibility, number one, whether that's safety in mental health safety, whether that's facility safety, whether that's security as far as resources, and different suggestions from the public. So, I just want the public to know that we are going to establish a safety and security committee, and that's going to work with the administration, with the law enforcement professionals, with the staff, and even with the students, because that night, the students did have some great suggestions on things that they would like to see happen, so. And that's going to be district-wide, so that's something that I wanted to do tonight, but unfortunately, the attorney didn't get done with the bylaws, so we're going to push it off to the next meeting. Any other comments from the board? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to, I need a motion to move Section A with the addendum for personnel.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Calavano, let's have a vote, please.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. I need a motion for Section B, Curriculum and Instruction, with the addendum.
I'll make that motion.
Any second?
I'll second.
Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. Mr. Calavano, I just want to go back and make a public comment. Page four of the Leva absence, you'll see Mrs. Villa Rosa is listed there. So, the public, that's not a mistake. That's there because there's pension laws and pension benefits that have to extend to the beneficiary, so that's why we left it on there. That wasn't insensitive a mistake. That is something that, it's done for the pension laws in the state of New Jersey, for the family.
And Mr. Charles, if I may, this is her due date. If today was that date, there would not be enough time to make sure that that is all taken care of for her, so that's why we have that. Once we know that's all taken care of, then we'll adjust that date.
Okay.
Okay? This is more about taking care of her and her family.
That's the point I wanted to drive from.
Yep, very good.
On Section C, I need a motion for a finance.
I'll motion.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
And President Charles?
Yes. I need a motion to move Section D, Reports.
One second. Item six on the, was, is delete?
That's correct. I mentioned that, that's correct. So now I need a motion for Section D, Reports.
I'll make that motion.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. Section E, Miscellaneous, it's the approval of the revised 1819 District Master Calendar. I need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Just to make sure, it's revised with the changes?
Correct.
That we discussed today.
The top page is correct.
Yeah.
And that Edison's?
And adding the Edison is right.
Edison days.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. Next on the agenda is reports from the board members. We'll start with Mr. Alper.
Sure. Last weekend, I was able to get up to the West Orange Art Center for the AP Art Student Exhibit. Some really great work. It was everything there from comic book panel-style art to makeup artistry, and I really encourage everyone to get down there if they haven't. It's over by Luna Stage and Pink Cupcakes in the Valley. Open weekends, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. through April 6th. All of our students, their parents, and their teachers should all be really proud. And back on March 2nd for Read Across America Day, I was lucky enough to be invited to read to two classes at the preschool and also to a first-grade class, Ms. Bohans at Washington. Got to read some Pete the Cat, which was a lot of fun, and met some really great kids. At Washington, we had some extra time, and I was also able to read to Mrs. Villa Rosa's class, which, you know, as we think of her and her friends and family at this awful time, please also take a moment to think of all the students she's had over the years, and especially her class from this year. It was a really great group of kids, and I just feel awful for them. I know how much my boys love their first-grade teacher, and I just can't imagine how hard it is for all the kids who've had her over the years in the district, and especially now. That's all for me.
Okay. Mrs. Mordecai?
Sure. I echo those sentiments. It's got to be very, very difficult for Mrs. Villa Rosa's family and the students and all of us. The whole district is hurting when something happens to one of our faculty. On another note, I was able to attend both basketball games. Lady Mountaineers did us proud. I know Mr. Robertson wants to report on that. He's jumping at the bit, so I'll leave that for him. But I even went to the away game, and, you know, while they didn't win, they fought really hard, and I'm so very proud of them. This week, in my role as President of the Essex County School Board Association, we will be hosting a program called Unsung Heroes on Thursday, March 15th, at Liberty Middle School, and the program starts at 6:00 p.m. I brought that program to West Orange last year, but to the greater Essex County, last year, we had almost 30 high schools, with each submitting a student from high school who overcome, who overcame obstacles and challenges and ended up being successful in high school, and it was a really, really nice program last year, and this is the second year that it will be held, and I'm looking forward to it. Hopefully, some of my colleagues can attend. Thank you.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
I'm good.
Mr. Robertson?
First, I just want to say, Mrs. Mordecai, the event on Thursday last year, it was spectacular. It was also very deeply moving. It was a great program that you put together. You know, the stories of the kids were just truly heroic, and it was something special to see, so I look forward to joining you this Thursday. Yes, jumping at the bit. Our Lady Mountaineers, girls' basketball team, were just, they were really exciting and phenomenal. So much talent, great teamwork, worked very hard, and they played with a lot of heart, very aggressively. It was fun watching them win the sectional title right here with a massive crowd cheering them on, and, you know, it was spectacular, and they really ended up controlling the game. While it was tough to watch them lose against the team that we played on the away game for the semifinals for the state, Franklin Township was actually the state champion for the past three years. So, they had a team, including their top player, number one, who had been playing together for the better part of the past three years and beating everybody. We played them very well. The truth is, we were playing them toe-to-toe, going at them hard for three quarters. We only had one bad quarter, and that was the second quarter, and that's what, you know, that's what hurt us. But other than that, our girls were just fantastic. I mean, really fantastic. Exciting to watch. Also to note, coming soon to a board near you, over a year ago, our PR committee was supposed to, as part of our board goals, do outreach to parents and invite parents to be a part of the PR committee, and we didn't follow through on that. So, we still are working on a plan, but we are going to be reaching out to folks, and we have listened to you. You've had some very important things to share with us over the past year, and we've listened to your thoughts, and you're, and, you know, really are, we encourage you to keep speaking out, and we also want you to come to the table and help us with ideas to help move ahead, and people have talked about healing and how to work better together as a team, and we're looking at all of that. So, as soon as we, we're working on a plan right now, but we'll be reaching out to you, so if you've been speaking out and proactive and part of our board meetings coming soon, we're going to be reaching out to you. And just thank you for your voice and for the courage and conviction that you've shared, as well as the caring.
Any further?
No, thank you.
Okay. I just want to extend my question. Congratulations to the Lady Mountaineers on their state championship. Last weekend, or two weekends ago, I attended the individual state championships for wrestling in New Jersey, held in Atlantic City at the Board Hall. West Orange had two representatives wrestling down there, Sebastian Rawls and Noah Tandy, both finished in the top 32 of the state, so congratulations to them. Also, special note that we had four other wrestlers who finished in the top 48 of the state, and they were Jordan DeVal, Colin Morgan, Edgar Moreno, and Michael Charles. So, not only do we have a successful, great team championship, but also we had some individual great seasons as well, so, and a bright future, because most of them are on the classmen, so.
Congratulations to your son.
Thank you, thank you. So, the next board meeting will be held 6:30, executive session, public session at 8:00 p.m. on March 26, 2018, right here in West Orange, West Orange High School. Next item on the agenda is petition and hearings of citizens on any subject. Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to speak, and Mr. Calavano will work the clock.
First, another thank you for your communications over the last couple of weeks with all of the snow and miscellaneous fire drills and all kinds of things have gone on, and you've been very proactive with keeping parents, I mean, almost too proactive every time. It's not a drill, it is a drill, but thank you, it's appreciated. I wanted to ask for a little clarification about the middle school honors process. I'm not going to be able to come to the meeting tomorrow, but I noticed that the materials that are up now are slightly different than what was presented at the meeting, and I think it's the same intent, I just want to be sure I understand it correctly, that now students who are currently in honors classes, who have an 80% or higher for the first two marking periods, are exempted from all, from the writing part and the test. And students who have below that are being exited from the honors process. So, that means that no current honors students will be taking the test, or do the students who are below 80% have an opportunity to take the test and maybe re-enter the program? I know there's confusion among, at Roosevelt, where my daughter goes, the kids are, there's sort of different rumors swirling around about what it is. And if that's correct, well, I hope that kids who have struggled have an opportunity to hang in there if the teacher thinks that that's appropriate, and maybe they need a little more time to get their feet under them. A C isn't bad, necessarily. That other students aren't going to have to take this test, I think, is a big step forward in this process. I think it's a waste to have them take the test. It's wasting their time. It's an extra test they don't need, and it saves the grading time and hassle for the teachers, and allows them to look at a pool of tests from students who are trying to get into honors, which is probably a more fair way for them to see it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Robin Isurlis, 22, Yale Terrace. I have four quick comments, questions. The first is about the honors program. I can't also attend tomorrow night's meeting. I have asked the Board of Ed to look into this for over two years, but I would like there to be some analysis on the test itself. I echo a lot of what Jennifer just said. Is there a way to look at the students who pass the test and their performance in honors classes and compare them to the students who did not pass the test but were placed in honors due to an appeal or the tap on the shoulder watch list? We still do not know how effective this test is, and though there are some changes, 60% of the baseline eligibility is still based on these tests, not to mention the instructional time lost to taking these tests and the grading, et cetera. So, that's one. Number two, wondering about when we will hear about the refusal procedure for those of us who will not be taking, will not be having our children take part. The third is, I was asked the Board of Ed to consider passing a New Jersey State Board of Ed Endors Resolution on Gun Control and Mental Health Services to Protect Our Youth, and this resolution actually includes sending this out to our elected officials. I took the time and made copies of the resolution for you, that I will give you, after my last announcement, which is, "On behalf of WOCAS, West Orange Cares About Schools, and the W O E A, the West Orange Education Association, I would like to personally invite all of you to attend our screening and talk back with the filmmakers of this great documentary called Backpack Full of Cash." It's Thursday night, 7 o'clock, at the West Orange Auditorium. The documentary highlights the devastating impact that the privatization efforts are having on our public education system. It is Public Education Week. Things like corporate charter schools, cyber schools, voucher programs, et cetera, and the impact this has on our most vulnerable committees. As of right now, I think there are 21 charter schools in Essex County, so this is an issue I would expect all of you to be interested in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremiah Salinas, 7 Crystal Ave. First of all, a few comments. One, I was looking at the policy, and there's no policy that states amount of time that's determined for public statements under the Community Board Policy section. I couldn't find anything on there, so if you would point me in the right direction, I would really appreciate that.
Sure.
I'm glad also to see that you don't have the attorney running the meeting tonight. I would like to see a report on the attendance records, dropout statistics, dropout rates at the high school. Maybe that's something that the board could put together. In addition to that, a copy of the board self-evaluation, I didn't see one of those either. If you could provide a copy of it, or, you know, send me an email, I'll email you, and you can point me in the right direction as well, too. I suggest that there be an update to the website, the district website, to make it more user-friendly, and releasing the information a lot sooner than today, just so people can have a little bit more time to look at it. I've been having discussions- I've been having discussions about having a student liaison on the board to be able to relay information, relay ideas, make suggestions. Someone that really is able to give you some interesting feedback as to how things are impacting the student body. One last thing. At the Board of Ed meeting in October of two thousand and sixteen, I found the information, there was twenty-six thousand, six hundred, seven dollars and twenty-five cents that were paid out for the qualitative and the qualitative goals. They were very broad. Some of them were to coordinate and oversee analysis of the special education program, guidance department programs. But I think the district has supervisors to do that. So it just seems that it's, we're given a bonus when we already have somebody doing that job. And I think that that's part of what the superintendent is supposed to do when it comes to seeing how the district is working. So have there, or have you already established the merit goals for this year for the contract that was signed at the last Board of Ed meeting? And when will you be having that information readily available for the community to take a look at it? Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello there. Thomas Wallshow, forty Overlook Avenue. Great intro. One of the problems I've been having and I've gone to the, look, my school, my daughter's school, to complain about it over and over and over again is the tone that the lunch aids take when they're disciplining our children. Some of the tactics that they use sound a bit like they're using platoon punishment where a child or two makes a misstep and an entire group of children is then punished through the loss of recess. I know there's actually a law on the, in consideration in two thousand and eighteen, a statewide law. But I think we should engage in some type of training with our lunch aid staff. And I also want to relay an awkward encounter I had in the town pool with two lunch aids where my daughter saw the two lunch aids and she started clamming up and getting very frightened of them. Now, she's not a troublemaker. She's a very well-behaved child, but all the yelling and the tones that have been used put her into deep fear. And the lunch aids wanted to communicate to us that they know people, which I thought was very awkward. I know people, too. I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't, you know, I know many people, but the way that they were communicating was as if they have some sort of political muscle that was like the subtle implication that they were giving me. I was very troubled by it. The lunch aid said, oh, she doesn't know my name because she never gets in trouble. But the fact that my daughter had such fear towards this adult that's in, you know, an authority position over her, it was very troubling. It could be something, you know, think about it. It could be something as simple as, you know, they raise their voice. It's a big crowded lunchroom. It's at Gregory School. They're all very loud places. It could be as simple as putting in like a P.A. system to tell the children when to line up. But they say things like, eat faster! See, I just scared you. And that, one time, you know, she said, she was sitting across from a child and he was spitting up food all over his shirt. Now, I'm just thinking of like, you know, if a child chokes in account of that, that could be, you know, a massive legal problem for our district, which, you know, that's not something we want. We don't want a child in any type of danger like that. So it's just like a matter of maybe there could be a district-wide training policy for the lunch aids. I know some of the lunch aids, you know, Ron, I've actually heard such great things about your wife and the children, actually, they really love her and they seem to respond to her tone. And at Gregory, we did have a lunch aid that's no longer with us there that was, she'd used a nice soft tone and the children really responded well to it. They liked it. They wanted to please her because she was so nice in contrast to the conduct of some of the other lunch aids there. So, so I hope that could be looked into very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further? So you know, we'll close that section of the meeting. Mr. Rusk.
Let me start backwards. That is something that we have already set up. We've set training up not only for Gregory, but all the lunch aids across the district, talking to them about handling children whom have a lot of energy, children who may be making mistakes at that point in time. And I always call it a blanket detention. Two students mess up and fifty kids get, have to sit down because that's not acceptable. That's definitely not okay. You talk to the two students and make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do as following, as far as following the rules. But the other students who are doing the right thing should not be penalized for that. So the training is definitely already set up and, but I will have a conversation with Gregory soon about those issues to make sure that we're not doing blanket detention or raising our voices for the wrong reason. Absolutely. Let's see. Dropout rates of the high school. We, Mr. Salinas, we are actually looking at that ourselves. We just received some information back, so we will be having that information soon. Mr. Mendez and I were doing some work on that recently. District website, timely information, student liaison on the board. The merit goals are established early in the school year, for that school year. So next year, the goals will be established early on and they are subject to the public. They come to the board meeting and they are approved at the board meeting. Let's see here. Honors, looking at two years back, that's one of the things that we've been doing. I shared some information with the board. It is not completed yet, so it's not ready for public presentation. But one of the things that we actually looked at last year was the number of students who made it in versus the number of students who were put in through the waiver system. So we will definitely have that information as well for you. As far as the Park refusal, that hasn't changed. Again, we know that the law is a little bit different now, but we're not sure what's going to happen. Obviously, all signs look like Park is going to either go away or be drastically changed. So we're not sure what that's going to look like. We keep getting a little bit of information once in a while. Obviously, we know for this year it's going to happen, so nothing's going to change except for the kids who have to pass at the high school level. So that will continue to do what we need to do. The board will look at the resolution. And yes, we are aware of the Thursday night, seven o'clock, as far as the privatization, the backpack and privatization. Ms. Beazer, the information that is on the website is the information that was presented at Liberty. The only thing we added was in the actual PowerPoint that we were using for the parents, we added in the teacher rating scales. There were four of them, one for each subject. But all the other information is what was presented at Liberty. And what I suggest to you and any other parent, if you just reach out to the principal, Mr. Clem at Liberty or Mr. Hush at Roosevelt or if your kids are going into sixth grade to Mr. Fitzgerald, they know this like the back of their hand. They absolutely can answer any questions that you have. And if you need help on my end, by all means, go ahead and reach out as well. I'll be glad to help you.
Okay, so comments from the board. Ms. Alper?
None.
Ms. Mordecai?
I'm sorry. I just forgot one thing that Ms. Beazer brought up. You asked the question about eighty percent, eighty percent as far as being exempt. Yes, that's correct. So if they're in the class, now again, this wouldn't apply to fifth graders because they're not in honors, but it would for current sixth graders and seventh graders. They have an average eighty or above. They are exempt as long as the parent wants that, wants their child to go into that same subject area for the following year. They have to carry a B average to go ahead and take the placement test and the writing sample.
I just have one quick comment. Mr. Salinas, yes, I agree with you. We should have a student liaison on the board. When I first got on the board a few years ago, I made that suggestion as well. But I guess we'll take a look at it this year and hopefully that can happen. But that has been a goal of mine, so hopefully everyone is in agreement. Students' voices are so important. And as Mrs. Beazer mentioned earlier about the pioneer article, you know, it's, that article just exemplifies how great the high school is and how very smart our students are. So it would be really welcome to have a student on the board with us. Thank you.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Good.
Mr. Robertson?
A couple of things. First, I want to dovetail on what Mrs. Mordecai just mentioned about the student liaison. I think we'd all be definitely enthusiastic about that. We have, we have students who are in our small learning community devoted to civics. We have students involved in student government. We have many scouts, girl scouts and boy scouts, who are educating themselves in civics and doing active things. You know, great opportunity to give one of these kids a chance to experience this. Couple of things. On the policy, in regard to a policy for the amount of time, you're correct, Mr. Salinas. There is no specific time stated in the policy. However, the policy does, states, and I can send it to you, that the board has the right to identify how much time is allotted to speak. And long before I came on the board, the board had agreed on the three minutes and no one has made a motion to change anything since. You know, we could always review it and discuss it, but, so we're abiding by the policy, but the policy, to your point, does not state a specific amount of time. Part of that is also, it's partly also done that way so you don't bind future boards. In case a board decides that they want to do something a little differently to engage with the public, they can do that. On the question of website, we haven't had our first new PR committee meeting with Mr. Alper and myself as the co-chairs, but one of the things that we were discussing is addressing how to improve the website and what would be necessary to do that. You're not the first person who's come forward and said that we could, that things could be a little bit more user-friendly in terms of how to access information. Definitely. Next is in regard to, where is this here? Also, an additional note to dovetail on what Mr. Rusk said in regard to the merit goals. This year, there'll be one quantitative merit goal and yes, it will be presented in the public. And while it's understood that everyone, that basically all the supervisors, et cetera, report to the superintendent, that merit goal is meant to allow the superintendent opportunity to focus on a particular area where we need to accomplish something more. The board will be looking at how to address that goal and we'll be doing it in public so that you'll have the opportunity to respond to it along with other folks. On the honors, just one additional note. Mrs. Isurles?
Hey.
Okay. We definitely, we've just received some very preliminary honors data and trust me, we are asking for much, much more. Matter of fact, we won't even look at comparative data pre, before this program, when the, when the requirements were different, granted it was under NJASK, and along with the current program and track even up through high school. We're also looking at it by race and gender and ethnicity and all that data and to see how it breaks out by subject matter. Something that is important about the role of the test this year, and I know that there are, and you're an educator, that there are a number of different philosophies about testing. But a big change this year is, one, that the test will only cover material that the children are actually taught in the class. They're not going to have material in the test that they have not been taught, whether with the idea of helping them to stretch or whatever. They're going to be tested on things that they have actually been taught. Two, a few sample questions will be, are provided to give an idea of what types of, if, you know, if your child wants to practice extra or whatever, that's there, but the sample questions have never been provided before. The idea of ensuring that, the board's ensuring that the test only covers what children have learned did not happen before. So these are pretty significant changes. And we feel it's a step in the right direction. Is it a perfect process? No. Feedback from you and other parents will help to continue, help us to continue to improve the process and improve the program. Thank you.
Just, I was going to say, to Tom, thank you for the kind words. I'll pass that along. Though I'm not sure my, my children feel the same way about, about the soft tone sometimes from my wife, but thank you for those kind words. To Mr. Salinas, Board Policy ninety-three twenty-two. And I'll read it for you because I brought it with me tonight. Meetings of the board are open to the public and all members of the community should feel free to attend. A time of public discussion of agenda items shall be included in order of business at appropriate time. The length of time scheduled for public discussion shall be stated at the meeting by the presiding officer, together with any timeline proposed for individual speakers. I'll make sure I send you that tomorrow. It's policy number ninety-three twenty-two. It's on the website as well. Okay. Any other further comment from there? Okay. Okay, so I need a motion. We're going to go back into close for personnel decisions and discussions. So I need a motion to go back into the second session.
I'll move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And there'll be no action taken?
No action taken.
No action taken. Correct.